I'd like to call the Spotsavina County School Board Meeting Monday, March 9th, 2015, to order. We have a quorum. Mr. Brazwell, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Mr. Brazwell. Before we approve the agenda, I just want to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. And I'd like to thank Deputy Bartman from the Spotsavina County Sheriff's Office for being here with us today. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the board coming to the agenda.
Mr. Brazwell with the motion and a second by?
Sir.
Mrs. Blalock, thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, any nays. Seven zero. I mean, we have no public hearing. I'm going to move on to item 3.01, Mad About STEM with Freedom Middle School. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Mad About STEM is dedicated to promoting the enjoyment of and keen interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The Freedom Middle School STEM program serves as a gathering place for students to meet others that enjoy STEM and with teachers that are preparing our students for the future and potential careers within the STEM initiatives. Students have committed to weekly after-school meetings on Tuesdays from 3:00 to 4:30 for six consecutive weeks at each grade level. Students have been introduced to hovercrafts, robotic arms, Army Raptors, quadcopters, drones, 3D printing machines, Google Glass, artificial intelligent racing simulators, and many more exciting opportunities. During this after-school time, students work cooperatively with partners and teams on designated challenges presented by the teachers. Students come to the Mad About STEM program with positive attitudes, ready to learn, and to support others in the fun and exciting STEM world at Freedom Middle School. Cooperating teachers are Mrs. Hornstein, 6th grade; Mrs. Brooks, 6th grade; Mr. Jones, gifted resource; Mrs. Wood, special education; Mr. Kinsell, Mrs. Kinsell, sorry, math specialist; and Mr. Marsh, 8th grade, science. Members of the Board and audience, our STEM activity.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. We appreciate you having us here tonight. My name is Greg Marsh, and I represent Freedom Middle School and the Mad About STEM program. The Mad About STEM program was put together with a collection of six different teachers throughout the entire Freedom Middle School. We met before school started this year to put together our logistics along with several different activities for the students to work through. Our STEM program is an idea that allows students the exposure to science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. Because teachers are fantastic day in and day out, they look and they talk too, and they learn from teachers, but we want to expose them to those other kinds of professions out there. The opportunity of STEM allows us to introduce these students to both scientists and engineers that are working currently in the field. What we'd like to do is to go through and introduce each of the members that we have here. Each of the members are from the 8th grade section of our Mad About STEM program. We have 7th grade and 6th grade for a total of 18 weeks of the Mad About STEM program. With a collection of over 90 students spanning Freedom Middle School, this is one of our goals this year as of expanding the STEM initiatives. The students behind me are 8th grade students, and I'd like to introduce them as Garrett Glenn, Josh Stokes, Chloe Wolf, Caitlin Huckler, and Rebecca Sewell. Each of them have a quick presentation about some of the challenges that they were a part of throughout the STEM program. Oh, you want me to do this one? Okay. One of our members, Joshua Sherwood, was unable to be here tonight. At the beginning of the 18-week program, we had a STEM kickoff where we had invited both students, parents, engineers, scientists from the community, and anyone else who would show up for our program as well. We had four guest speakers from outside in the community. We had two engineers. We had a lead engineer for the ordinance disposal team on a Fort Belvoir, and we had the commander of the Dahlgren Naval Surface Warfare Center present to our students. At that time, each of the presenters was given about 15 minutes to talk to encourage students that some of the fields and some of the things that they're working on. Next person up is Rebecca Sewell.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Sewell, and I am in the 8th grade STEM program, but I also do NJHS, which is National Junior Honor Society. The Lego challenge was one where we had a diagram set up already built out of Legos over on the stage or off to the side. We were in groups of three, and one of our group had to go back and forth between our group and the Lego model and had to explain it without actually using the object that it was, had to explain how to build it. Most of the time, it was really difficult because there was a lot of small pieces, and so it looked really complicated, though most of the time, a lot of people actually finished it or got really close. It really built up teamwork for a lot of us, but sometimes we had a few disagreements about what piece went where. Pretty much overall, what I learned from it was you kind of have to listen better to some people if they know what they're doing.
Hi, my name is Chloe Wolf, and I am in the 8th grade. I am a part of National Junior Honor Society and German Club. I was also in VRC, but that was in 6th grade, so a long time ago. And the challenge hovercraft, the challenge hovercraft was very difficult because we had to make a hovercraft out of just basic school supplies, like a CD, pencil, rubber band, and et cetera. So, and/or you could say, like, just random objects. So, when the group thought it was impossible and we were just about to give up, we, the instructors gave us a little hint to help us in the long run, so we wouldn't give up and we could still succeed. The challenge related to the real world by showing us and teaching us that when you get tired or frustrated, don't give up and still try to succeed, just because it can help you in the long run. And also, what I learned from this building the hovercraft is you need a lot of patience and time so you don't get frustrated.
Hi, I'm Joshua Stokes, and I am in the 8th grade Freedom, and I am part of the STEM Club. I am an advanced science and participate in after-school clubs such as FCI and TSA. In STEM class, I have had the opportunity to play and experiment with Onky Drive and drones. The challenge in Onky Drive is using your phone as a steering wheel to control your car and beat the other opponent. This challenge can be related to real-life situations because you use hand-eye coordination, focus, and concentration daily. The challenge in mini-drones is able to hover steadily and control the direction of the mini-drone. This challenge can be related to real-life situations because drones are, in fact, being used as military assistance to gather information for governmental purposes. They're also being used and tested to deliver packages to your front door.
Hi, my name is Garrett Glenn. I am in STEM, and I was also in TSA. STEM is the best thing that I ever participated in. One challenge was the hexbug challenge. It was a lot of work. The groups faced several problems. For instance, the hexbugs turned around and went the opposite direction. We tried different options, but only two hexbugs could make it when we needed three out of five. This helped me because I learned all ideas are not perfect, and it takes hard work to come up with the right solution.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Huckler, and in addition to STEM, I'm in NJHS and FCC LA. The robotic arm challenge was pretty much, we had basic materials like cardboard and string and a cup, and we had to lift the cup 15 centimeters, and we couldn't, and we had to be like 45 centimeters away from it. And this was difficult because all the materials costed a price from like, if you needed it the most, it was more expensive, and if it was like not as needed, it was less cost. So, the challenge was the person who did all the, who completed the challenge and spent the least amount of money was deemed the winner. And after that, we had to do a presentation on our robotic arm to sort of sell it like we would do in the real world. And that really helps you in the real world to like present and stuff. And in addition to the robotic arm, we have the Talon over there, which is sort of like an off-branch to it because it's also a robotic arm. And we do a challenge where we have to do a tennis ball. We have to pick it off like a pedestal sort of and turn it around and drop it in a box. And this relates to real life because people in the Army have to disarm landmines out in Iraq and Afghanistan.
What we'd like to do, what we'd like to do is to share with you our interest video that we put together at the beginning of the year, the beginning of this Mad About STEM program, and then give you the opportunity for you to try some of the electronics STEM initiatives that our students brought with us tonight. We do have, we have a mini-drone, we have the Talon, we have Google Glass, and part of the hexbugs. It's not working with technical difficulties with STEM, but with that, if you'd like to have an opportunity to try some of these out, that opportunity is now. We want to thank you very much for allowing us to present tonight. I know that the students have been given a wonderful opportunity, and we thank you for that. Good evening.
I just wanted to mention that I know Garrett took the opportunity to share the Google Glass that he is wearing and to share that with several of us here on the Board. I had read about it, but never had an opportunity to actually put it on and see how it could work, and it is amazing what that little device can do. And the principle, you may want to share with the Board how you achieved a Google Glass, how you arrived at getting a Google Glass.
We asked nicely and said please and thank you. We've had an opportunity to write quite a few grants as well as have some gift opportunities to allow us to use the Talon throughout the year. Google Glass was purchased by their teacher, but shared with all students in every classroom. And I think it's an exciting technology to try.
Thank you. And Garrett, thanks for sharing with us.
And I got to see that, I think it was, it was the drone, I think that's what I saw? Yes, very cool. And then as it was coming up, he caught it. It was just like perfect timing. That's got to take talent. And then looking at the, seeing just all of the, what goes on with the robot, and I know you had the Talon, that's what you said it's called. Very cool. I mean, everything you guys did, I got to play with the Google goggles, and that's not what I know, I just didn't say Google's glass. And I was not very talented with that, so thank you for sharing, though.
Are you going to be able to demonstrate the arm?
We were getting worried.
Oh, and there's the hover, or the drone. Hey, guys, how long did it take you guys to learn how to do, like to figure out how to work the drone so you could catch it and to be able to drive the Talon? How, what was the learning curve for you?
Well, I learned it probably in like one class period. It's not that hard because it's just like, there's like labels, it's like drive forward and up and down. It wasn't that hard, but that's.
Yeah, it took me a long time to learn how to fly this.
It took me about two weeks to learn because I had to learn how to control it and keep it steady in the air.
And I wanted to say something about what, something you all had in common in your presentations that you never gave up, you kept trying. And that's what I, I love hearing that. Wow. So that's all the cameras on there. So, thank you for the presentation, showing us how everything works, and all the, I mean, just the heart that you all have in this. You know not to give up, and all of you, wonderful job.
Thank you again, all of you. That was wonderful. Okay, I'm going to move on to our recognitions and awards. Item 4.01, Fine Arts, Mr. Wolf.
Again, good evening, everybody. March is Youth Art Month. Fine arts teachers highlight the importance of fine arts education by special activities within schools and communities. One of the ways the visual art teachers recognize Youth Art Month is by a county-wide display at the school board office. The pieces of artwork you see in the boardroom and school board offices represent 22 of our schools. These students were recognized and received certificates of appreciation at a reception held in their honor prior to this meeting. If any of them should still be here, if you could please stand so we could formally recognize you?
4.02 Superintendent's Award.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This month's superintendent award winner is Alexandra Brewster. Ms. Brewster is an 8th grade student at Thornburg Middle School. Her art teacher is Tisha McMillan. Mrs. Brewster's artwork will hang in the superintendent's office for the month of March. We would like to thank Alexandra Brewster and her art teacher and ask them to please come forward and be recognized for this outstanding accomplishment. Our teacher is here, but the student was unable to make this evening.
If we could continue on with the NASW Virginia Social Worker of the Year recognition,
Good evening. The Social Worker of the Year Award honors a member of the National Association of Social Workers who exemplifies the best of the profession's values and achievements through specific accomplishments. In honoring the Social Worker of the Year, NASW has chosen a social worker that has demonstrated making difference within the areas of advocacy, outstanding leadership, positive image for the social work profession, and has taken risk to achieve outstanding results. Tonight, we are pleased to share that Michelle Swisher has been selected as this year's NASW Virginia Social Worker of the Year. She will be honored at the NASW Chapter Annual Conference on March 21st, 2015, in Williamsburg. Congratulations, Mrs. Swisher, on being selected for this distinguished honor, and thank you for your dedication to our students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Brazwell. I was not going to let Ms. Swisher sit down without saying a few words about her. She knows I'm a huge, huge fan of her work, and I could almost get emotional because I've stood by her so many times and watched her serve our students and our families. I've went with her to hotels and watched her work firsthand when she has a family that's in need. I've really never seen anything like it. She's a servant heart born with it. It's something in her blood. And, you know, I've talked to her at length about her work, and if you know her, you know that she is the real deal. She truly loves her families, she truly loves our students, and she truly cares, not just about our division, but about our community. There's nothing about this award that she doesn't deserve, but it isn't even big enough for what you do in this county. And I just am so proud that you're being recognized for it, but I want you to know that we already knew you were the social worker of the whole world in my eyes. I already knew that. I didn't need to hear it, but I'm so proud that you're getting the recognition that you deserve. Thank you for everything you do, thank you for everything you've done, and I want to make sure that I take a minute to ask your four sons and your husband, who are such supporters of you and proud of you, to stand up so we can recognize their efforts in allowing you to give to our community. If you know Michelle's family, you know it took their support of her to allow her to give to us. So we thank all of the gentlemen in your life. Thank you.
Ms. Blalock?
Perfect. Thank you.
Michelle, we love you. Thank you very much. Okay, on to public comments, item 5.01, Dr. Martin.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted at five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. At this time, I do not have a list of anyone having signed up, but I defer back to you in case there's someone else who would like to come forward.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Swisher?
I just want to thank everybody here for all your continuous support, but also my I want to thank everybody on the Board as well as my team in Office of Student Support Services, along with the social workers I work with. This month is Social Work Month, and I am proud of the team that I work with. I would not be able to do my job without all of those people. We have 14 school social workers that are full-time, and we have four that are contractors with our school system. Of those, 11 are licensed social workers, so they're the mental health professionals in our schools, and I am very proud of that team. So I want to thank them as well for all of their support. Thanks.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comments, and I'm going to move on to 5.02, Board Member Comments. And I'm going to start today with Mr. Blaine.
First of all, I'd like to say a couple of words about the former recipient who was just up here a minute ago, not long after I was elected to the school board. In fact, Ms. Shelley and I had a chance to have a tour of some of the folks and some of the neighborhoods that they deal with, and I was so impressed at their approach and the friendship and the attitude that she and her staff maintained and the camaraderie that seemed to have been developed as I think about the families that we met. We had this last year, about 600 homeless kids in the county, and we had a disturbing experience in many ways for me to see the kind of living conditions that some of these children are growing up in. And I have the greatest respect because of that experience for the work that they do on a regular basis, and I'd like to thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Gramp.
I just want to thank the Mad About STEM kids from Freedom Middle School because those things were awesome, and Garrett Glenn for showing me the Google Glass because now I'm really excited about it, and I actually could use it. Very impressive.
Mr. Brazwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Baker and his staff, especially Ms. LaShawn Gaines, for their hard work in preparing, both Ms. Shelley and I, for our preparation to the Board of Supervisors. You worked tirelessly. The work that you did behind the scenes allowed the two of us to have an opportunity to present the school board's budget in a way that I felt was very effective. So thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication to your craft. I appreciate it. I also had the opportunity to go to Cortland High School today and speak to a group called Inspired Black Men. It's a group that Mr. Marx had me come by and share with them, and the essence of our discussion was about not only attending colleges, but exploring and looking at attending historically black colleges and universities. Attendance in historically black colleges and universities have dropped significantly over the past several years, and there were a lot of young students that were from a variety of different backgrounds, whether they were freshmen up to seniors. And we wanted to not only just inspire them to consider HBCUs, but we also wanted them to continue to strive for high academic excellence. It's an awesome thing when you can get someone that cares about our young men and bring them in a place where they can receive nurture and hear of some ways to obtain success in life and get it in such a way where they feel loved. Now, I, for one, was a graduate of a historically black college university. I told them and shared with them that as a result of going to that, throwing that path, I had a lot of nurture and care from my instructors that I was really appreciative of, but I also found it to be a cost-effective way of attending school. I was a recipient of a ROTC scholarship, and as a result of going to the historically black college university, I had an opportunity to earn my commission as an infantry officer in the United States Army. So, I was honored to have an opportunity to speak to those young men about their future. I told them that what they did during the next four years of their life will affect the next 40 years of their life, and so that they needed to continue to press the next forty years of their life, and so that they needed to continue to press on with the serious work that they've engaged in, but understand that this is a golden opportunity and that they shouldn't misuse it. So I thank Mr. Marks for giving me the opportunity to speak to that. And I also want to follow up. I know a while back, we had a discussion about employment within our division, and we talked about what our challenges were. And I know that we were going to, at some point, do a breakdown by building, and I'm still looking forward to seeing that study come through so that we can have an opportunity to continue to tackle those particular issues and get ahead of the curve as we already are. So I just, I thank Ms. Colbert for her work in that, and I thank her for leaning forward on that particular initiative, and I'm really looking forward to that study because all of our students need to achieve in order for all of us to obtain greatness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two points. One, I want to say again, special congratulations to Mrs. Swisher for an honor and an award well deserved, and representing not only Spotsylvania County, but Virginia and nationwide. Also, I want to say special thanks to our STEM participants from Freedom Middle School for the students for sharing with us their enthusiasm and persistence and applications to daily life and having the patience to continue your pursuits. Well deserved and very well done. Thank you.
Mrs. Blalock?
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Just a couple of things. I want to recognize the maintenance crews. We did just come off a lot of snow days, and I'm going to say this, and everybody's going to say, "Don't say it out loud." I think we've called our last one, I hope. You never know. But what a fabulous job they do for us, and they go unrecognized and under the radar. So I want to give a big shout-out to our Maintenance and Fleet Department for their hard work, especially clearing some parking lots for us so we can get our students in safely. I want to, I had to pull this up to make sure I say it right. A big congratulations to Massioponics High School. They won the VHSL Group 5A State Theater Festival Championship over the weekend. I'm sure we'll be seeing them here soon, but it's a current win. I want to congratulate them. And Ms. Kemp, their director and teacher over there at Massioponics, and that's just a huge, huge accomplishment for them. We're very proud of them. Two of the main questions I'm getting on my social media and through the community are about makeup for the SATs. At this time, we do not have the makeup date. We did have an SAT scheduled last weekend. Unfortunately, it was one that had been rescheduled a couple of times, but the weather has gotten ahead of us, and we will be coming out with a date hopefully very soon and more information. And the other question I'm getting is, are we going to have any makeup time for the snow day's missed? And I am understanding that we'll be briefed on that very soon this evening. So if you'll just hang tight if you're watching, and we'll hear from staff soon on if we're making up time or if we're not. And that's all I have, Ms. Shelley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock. Mr. Laura?
Madam Chair, it is with much sadness that I want to share with the board and administration, the general public, that on March 7th, we lost one of our students at Livingston Elementary School. Madison Jet was a third grader at Livingston, and she'll be missed tremendously by the school and our community, and I'd like to invite everyone here to join me in a moment of silence in memory of Madison Jet. Thank you. And on a lighter note, at the last meeting that we have with the board supervisor, the question came up briefly about the fact that there are 1,717 teachers, and what else do the other people do? Well, I restrain myself because I really wanted to go through the list and talk about the contribution that counselors and assistant principals and you all know. By the way, do we have any principals here with us? Wave your hand. There you go. Welcome, and thank you for being with us. You honor us with your presence here. And you're the stick that stirred the drink, make no mistake about that. But also, during my comments, I'd like to respectfully ask our superintendent to, our next meeting, under the recognition and award, that we take a minute to recognize the contribution of our bus drivers and maintenance workers. The last two winters been difficult. This past winter's been difficult. As a part-time farmer, I know, I was out there on days that I couldn't break the ice. The reason I couldn't break the ice was because the entire hundred-gallon bucket was frozen, so I had to use the tractor to flip it over, you know, and the block of ice, there's still some of it left there, even though we have had warm weather. And this was the condition that our maintenance people went out there to work. This was the condition that our bus drivers went out there, and I know that by the time they leave their garage or put the bus on the road, they have already spent half hour to an hour getting that bus ready to roll. Those diesel engines are hard to start. So I think it'll be behoove us to bring those folks here so that we can thank them personally for their contribution, because they are the core of what makes our family what it is. And we always talk about, together, we prepare our student for their future. They make a great contribution. So I would hope that the superintendent takes up my requests, and next meeting, we'll be surrounded by some of my favorite people, bus drivers and maintenance folks. The last comment I want to make, Madam Chair, is the fact that over fifty students are trying out for the Spotsylvania baseball team. I am already looking forward to watching play, and we have fifty-one young ladies that are trying out for the girls' soccer team. That's a lot for any school, it's a lot for our small school, and in fact, forty-three percent of the students at Spotsia High School are participating in athletic activities. That is commendable. So that is a good way for me to finish my comments today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. My fellow board members mentioned some of the things that I wanted to say as well, so about the Maintenance Department and our bus drivers. Thank you. I actually had written down that they're rock stars in my book because of all the hard work that they have put in. So thank you again to all of them. I just wanted to let the public know that earlier at four o'clock this afternoon, we held a work session to discuss communication. We are being accredited through Advanced Ed, so the process that we're going through now, and then a brief update on some of the legislation that went through in the Virginia General Assembly this past season. So I just wanted to let everyone be aware of that. As Mrs. Blalock mentioned, we, about the calendar and the SAT, we are in communication with the College Board to get makeup day for the test that was missed yet again this past weekend. So hopefully, we will have that information very soon and get it out to you. And I appreciate from Dr. Baker, because I had requested the calendar report that we were going to get today so that we can update the public about what's going on with our instructional calendar. So, Dr. Baker, thank you very much for putting that on the agenda. And with that, I'm going to move on to 5.03, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I'll be very brief, but I appreciate all the comments that were shared by the board tonight. Really wanted to acknowledge the Mad About STEM program that was presented tonight as being representative of that above and beyond brand of instruction and support that our students receive. So I want to compliment our teacher, but also the students. It's great to see our students using their knowledge in order to create and to problem-solve, and to see that actively happening in our classrooms and in our schools. And just as a reminder to the board, as we look at our strategic plan over time, our goal remains to build STEM as a daily pedagogical approach, elementary through secondary, so that all of our students have access to those kinds of learning opportunities, that it's not, and I'm so appreciative of folks that are giving of their time to do it as an enrichment, as an extra. Over time, we hope that it becomes more of the type of instruction that our students can have, and that takes time, it takes support, and it takes resources. And so I look forward to our continued growth in that area. I also wanted to say that this month, as we celebrate so many different things, from our arts and our music to our social workers, as was acknowledged tonight, I am so impressed with, it can't really get better, because every time we have the artwork up, you just see the talent that our students have and the impact of our teachers and what they are able to cultivate in the arts, the visual and the performing arts. And I'm just very proud of our students, and it's a real honor to be able to, and appreciate the board allowing our meetings each month to have that student-centered focus as is appropriate. And the last thing that I wanted to share, you know, Mr. Laura alluded to it when he was talking about the many different roles that our different adults play to, you know, public education, this is a very complex organization, and it gets simplified in a lot of different ways, unintentionally in many cases. But all of those different roles, many of which are specialized, enable us to do so many things for our students and serving our community. And I know that when I saw Ms. Swisher, and I see Ms. Dolan back there, and many of our social workers who do their jobs every day, and they are very service-oriented, the one thing that gets left out of this profession that may be the most important part, and this is my report to the board tonight, something that, as we go through this season of, again, another difficult snow, and you watch people pull together, there's a quote that I love, and I'm not going to do it verbatim, but that sometimes the most important things cannot be measured. And as we are in this era of, all results must be measured in order, everything has to be quantifiable, but probably the single most important ingredient in what's being provided, and I'm confident in this in Spotsylvania County, is love. Thank you.
Very nice, Dr. Baker. Thank you very much. Okay, on to 6.01, Board Committee Reports. Are there any committee reports? I don't see any. Our Food Task Force was postponed again due to weather, so we are now scheduled for March 19th, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed. So that's on for the Food Task Force. And now for 6.02, the Instructional Calendar Update. Ms. Leonard?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Well, I'm before you again this year to talk about the instructional calendar and talk about how we are once again in an anomaly year. So I'm wondering if it's more of the pattern of our region than it is sort of anomalies, but we will hopefully be able to clarify some situations and hopefully be able to clarify where we are instructionally and what we need to do in regards to the instructional calendar. Presentation is brief, but we're hoping that we can also get some guidance from the board as we move forward as well. Instruction Time Requirements. I know that all of you are very well aware of this, but it does help the public to frame what we are talking about, so I did want to go over it one more time. That Virginia Code does state that we are required to go 180 days or 990 teaching hours. It is "or," so just wanted to make sure that that is clear. If we go below the minimum of 990 hours, we must make up that time, even in the event of a declared state of emergency. And I want to take a moment to explain why that is. If we have a declared state of emergency, which we did in fact this year, which was declared on February 16th for that event, we would have to apply for the waiver. You would only be eligible for the waiver if the school board has made a concerted effort to already make up time. So you are not permitted to have a state of emergency and automatically get that waiver unless there has been a concerted effort to make up time on the front end, and that is the piece that is very relevant to that second bullet. According to 22.1-98, reduction of state aid when the length of school term below 180 days or 990 hours. So what that means is we receive a reduction of funds if we do not meet either the 180 or the 990. Our Current Instructional Time. Since winter break, as you are well aware, we did not miss any time between the beginning of school up until winter break. Since winter break, we have had thirty-three days of school. We've had two full weeks of instruction. That would be January 19th, the week of January 19th was a full week of school, as well as the week of February 2nd was a full week of school. We have missed ten school days due to weather, and we have two that are made up. One was on January 26th already, and the other is already planned to be made up according to the instructional calendar, which is April 3rd. We also have a number of delays as well, and we have six two-hour delays to date. Moving forward, as of today, March 9th, additional time is not required. If additional instructional time is lost, then we can utilize the half-days to make up time making those full days. Remaining half-days for the 2014-15 calendar, it's important to note that these are at the elementary and the middle school level. The bullets there are at the elementary and the middle school level. May 1st, June 11th, and June 12th. The instructional time, it's also very important to note that the instructional time varies by level. Additional instructional time may be needed at the elementary level, depending on the amount of additional time missed. So in other words, if we are not missing any more time, then we would, as of today, not need any additional time. If we miss any additional time, the elementary level would be under the 990 hours, and therefore we could then look at the half-days in order to look at making up that time. I should note also that recent board action to change the bell times at the elementary and the middle school level for next year would alleviate this problem. That's very important, so thank you in advance for allowing us to move forward with changing those bell times. And we are also recommending to provide an update to the board on March 23rd. We're hoping that we certainly do not have any inclement weather between now and March 23rd, but we would like to, if the board wills, to be before you again, just to provide an update if necessary.
Dr. Baker?
I just wanted to follow up. I know there are questions and some feedback that the board can provide to Ms. Leonard. One of the things that, over the last two years, as we've had significant inclement weather, though so far this year still is not on par with last year as far as the number of days and the number of delays that we've had, but it's still been a significant winter. One of the things that I want to just remind the board, and that sometimes gets lost because certainly last year, when the strategy was recommended and chosen and adopted by the board to add time to the end of the school day to allow us to make up many of the hours, there was a twofold purpose in that, and sometimes what gets lost is that it was just to get us to the minimums that were required by the state. But last year, the focus was twofold. It was not only to get the minimums, but because of the significant disruption throughout the instructional season, we wanted to also look at, is there a way to really add back instructional time that will support achieving the objectives that we need to achieve in the classroom and in our schools? So please know that that's, sometimes it can be that we're just trying to make up time for a minimum, but that was it. So when you look at the current recommendation from staff, one, we'd love to be confident that the winter is over and it feels great out there right now, but we do want to use the next two weeks to make sure that we know exactly where we are, or we could end up making a recommendation tonight for perhaps a half-day and then come back later and have to do that again. The other thing that I will point out, because I'm a big believer in not only having the instructional time, but the quality use of the instructional time. time, but the quality use of the instructional time. It's an interesting thing, but the, when the past two calendars were built, it was with the intention of providing more systematic, structured, collaborative time for staff at different points in the year to better support instruction in the classroom. Because of how much winter weather we've had, there have been many, very, very little of that has occurred in the second semester. So even though we are right at the edge on elementary, the reason that we are not providing a recommendation for a cushion is because May 1st is the last opportunity at the elementary and middle level for that type of collaboration prior to assessment occurring, that at this point, we would like to see if it's possible to hold on to that. But if something else occurs, it may be that we're back before you with a different recommendation. But I wanted to provide that additional context to Ms. Flannard's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Ms. Bala.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. That clarified a lot. Just a few questions. A couple of them, I know the answer, but I think with the questions I'm getting, we need to say them out loud. I was wrong on one thing. I thought we had missed 11 days, so I had heard, got some misinformation. Is it 10?
Yes, ma'am.
10 days, six two-hour delays so far?
That's correct.
Okay. When you say we're fine for the middle and high school, correct?
We are actually fine right now, as of today, at all three levels.
In elementary, how close are we exactly? Do you have the?
Yes, I do. It's less than one hour.
Talk about cutting it close. Okay. Right now, we are going April 3rd as a makeup-
Yes, ma'am.
Makeup day. And have we looked, are we, I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking, because I am not a teacher and I would never tell any instructor how to do their job, but are we, has anybody asked about shifting SOLs? I know APs are in stone, but can we, are we shifting? Is anybody talking about that?
That's a great question. It's actually one that I have on my docket to discuss with Ms. Bala because in the recent Sups memo that we just received, that was an option to look at adjusting the window if needed. And so we are looking into that right now.
Okay.
Is, do we have, do we have that room, and do we need that wiggle room, and what does that look like? So that is something that we are looking into.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you. And we talked a little bit, and Dr. Baker cleared up a lot, about some, half-days may be an option, because like you say, if anything happens, and we've even had an earthquake day in the school division in recent memory, so anything could happen. And we have to add half-days. Are you talking, I know you said the half-days are marked for middle and elementary, but middle actually has a cushion.
That's correct.
Elementary does not. I don't consider an hour a real cushion anymore. So are you talking about the half-days? The middle would go full days as well, or just elementary?
That would be something that we would bring to the board, and I think that we would have the discussion about the instruction aspect as well.
Okay.
I think that I really appreciated Dr. Baker's remark, because we are looking at 990 to check that box, but we're also looking as, what do our students need instructionally? And the middle is not that far behind elementary in this case. High school is a little bit further behind, so they have received more instructional hours than middle. So that would be something we would be bringing to the board's attention and looking at, do they need, do our students need additional instructional time, and balancing that between checking the box and providing good time for instruction.
Okay, so that's still up for discussion. And could you just give a brief rundown to how much time high school still has as a cushion and middle school? We do know elementary is under an hour.
That's correct. Middle school is currently under three days.
Okay.
They're a little bit over two and a half.
Okay.
And high school is at five days.
Okay, so high school is in really pretty good shape.
Right.
For time-wise, it's just-
If we had the 1080 across the board, which is why I referenced the bullet earlier, if all of our levels were at the same 10 minutes extra at elementary and five minute at middle, then everyone would be still at five days right now.
Yeah, so the, next year, that will be, that will be corrected, and that is, that it was a good move. So I was glad that, actually, you thanked us, but the Calendar Committee brought that to us. So that was, that was a good move on the Calendar Committee's part. I want to thank the Calendar Committee. It's not been a good two years for snow, that's for sure. And I believe it was just the year before, we did not have one snow day.
We had one earthquake day-
And that's it.
-before school started.
But not a snow day.
So there was not one day off from school two years ago.
So you never really know what you're going to get. That's, that's something I've learned sitting on this board. And the last thing is just to comment, I really want to commend Dr. Baker and his staff for, at the foresight to talk about, if we do have makeup days, making sure that any instruction is placed before assessments, because even though two of those half-days are at the end of the year, you want to try to get, it's not, we're not talking about, we just want to get the hours. We want to make sure that we get as much quality instruction as we can, because none of us enjoy missing that much instruction. You know, after a day or two of snow days, we were, we were ready to be back in that classroom. And so I really appreciate you all looking at a way to get that instruction in prior to assessment. I know that the staff really appreciates that too, teachers appreciate that too. Well, thank you so much for the update. I know a lot of people waiting, waiting to hear that. So thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
Do you by any chance know between March 10th and the end of the school, historically, how many bad days we've had, or how, in the last five, four or five years?
The interesting thing is, I recently did look at that, and actually, last year, March was not in our favor, but the whole season last year was not in our favor. So the, the end of March, I think last year was a little bit atypical. The year before, as Ms. Bala noted, we had no days whatsoever. And then typically before that, it has been, if any, towards the beginning of March.
So you're saying the chances are, historically, not many problems?
If I, I hope so.
Yeah.
I continue to cross my fingers, Mr. Blaine.
My suggestion would be to err on the side of safety, frankly, and find an extra day somewhere for everybody, if you can do it. I think we, we'd be ahead if we're prepared. If the last day of the year, you make a change, you can do that too, but.
What I think too, Mr. Blaine, we are looking, as part of that presentation, to have the board focused on those three half-days as, as possible, if we miss any other, other time, and obviously probable if we do. The, the other thing that can be done is there also are options of adding a day to the end of the school year for a full day, and there's also adding time. We know that that's, that can be extremely disruptive. The question is whether that benefits our schools instructionally versus the different disruption and potential chaos that it causes. And so right now, we, we feel like the half-days are going to be the best use of that if we need to. But I do think it's important, as we look at future calendars, that it isn't an anomaly. And I appreciate everyone looking back at the earthquake year, but that was not the year I was, my first year of being superintendent. Every year, my third year of being superintendent, we have had at least eight to nine days of inclement weather. And so I would say three years makes a trend. And so we do need to consider that so that our calendar is solvent, given the amounts that, and again, that change that occurred. It used to be that there was really a 185-day calendar in the division where all five of the first days that were missed were made up. And that was a recommendation from the Calendar Committee and adopted by the board to not continue that. But we do need to look at the trend that's happened now and try not to find ourselves in that reactive position too often.
Mr. Laura?
The interesting thing about the weather is that we're all experts on it, and this year has nothing to do with next year. And in fact, thinking back, the worst year of my many years in Virginia was around 1994, and it wasn't because of a snow, it was because of a drought. And I was teaching at Spotsia High School, and many of my students, their wells were dry, and they had to go dig deep wells, you know. And in my own place, the drought affected me greater than any snow we could deal with. Drought is awful. So, you know, it's a balance. The other thing that I'd like to say, and we all are very much aware of the fact that we are halfway between the north and the south, and that's how our forefathers intended the nation's capital to be, which means that sometimes we get that Massachusetts weather, sometimes we get that Florida weather. And it varies. Now, it would not be, we would not be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars if we were to invest in all the equipment that Mr. Uppercut would need, you know, to deal with, you know, the snow. We don't have that much snow here when you look at it in long range. So therefore, his staff is operating with minimal equipment, which caused them to have to work hard, like the Bank of Maryland, daytime, nighttime, and Saturdays too. But this doesn't happen every year. And we have to put money into education, not into equipment. And the county does the same thing. The state doesn't have all the equipment that Maine or Massachusetts has, because it doesn't snow that much in Virginia. And we learn to deal with it. I, I thank Dr. Baker for being so careful, because Spotsylvania is like a two-headed monster. Out where I live, it's a lot different than where the rich people live out in the Cortland and Chancellors District, you know. And our roads are narrow. And, but our children, you know, you can't have too many first and second graders waiting, you know, at a bus stop in the middle of a snowstorm, but when it's icy out there. So he has to take that into consideration. And also, all the kids that are ninth and 10th graders, 11th graders that are driving. So all these things come into play. It's not an easy decision to make. But he makes, this year, thank God, and thank through his wisdom, he made the right call every time. And thank you for keeping track of the hours. So we're moving on. And Mr. Blaine, spring is here. Baseball's around the corner, so.
Anyone else have any comments?
One more.
One more.
I just want to thank this Calendar Committee, because we are actually, from what I'm reading in the papers, not in, in bad shape for the amount of snow we ended up getting. So thank you for your hard work last year to prepare us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Flannard.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker, thank you for bringing that report to us. Thank you very much. Okay, 7.01, 0.02, Consent Agenda Items. Dr. Martin?
On the Consent Agenda this evening, of the minutes of the February 23 regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
Madam Chairman, I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, so Mr. Blaine approves the agenda items. Do I have a second?
Mr. Blaine didn't approve. Mr. Blaine needed a motion.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr., thank you. Mr. Blaine made a motion to approve the-
And I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Bala actually got you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda items, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay, 7-0. On to action items. 8.01, Approval of the Special Meeting of the School Board. And I'm going to talk about that. In our work session this afternoon, we discussed our external review by Advanced Ed on March 29th through April 1st. This review is part of Spotsylvania County Public Schools' application for our system's reaccreditation. The six components of the reaccreditation protocol are executive summary, assurances, self-assessment, student performance diagnostic, stakeholder feedback diagnostic, improvement plan, stakeholder involvement. The external review team will be comprised of six Advanced Ed experts who will evaluate the division in respective areas during their visit on site. The external team review, the external review team will conclude its work on April 1st and will present an exit report to the system administrators and the school board members. This exit report will provide a general briefing of the visit and findings and recommendations to the school board. We are recommending that the school board arrange a special meeting to allow members to participate in the Advanced Ed Exit Report presentation on April 1st, 2015. The tentative time of the presentation is 4:00 PM. And may I have, have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. For purpose of clarification, the meeting will be in this room?
The meeting will be right here. Yes.
As, as recommended.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Blaine, do we have any discussion? Okay, Ms. Bala.
Knowing the date at this time, I know I will not be available for medical reasons, so I'm requesting I do this from the telephone.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Is that approved?
I think we would probably have to vote for it on that, that evening, but I can't see, we can vote on it now.
Can we get Dr. Martin to clarify?
Yeah. Can we make a vote on that now?
Yes, you can do that now.
Okay.
Chair, let's include that in the motion.
Okay. Well, we'll include in the motion that we, when we hold, to hold the meeting on April 1st, that Mrs. Bala will be included in the meeting via telephone.
Correct. If Mr. Blaine will second-
And with Mr. Blaine?
That can be added to it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more, any more discussion? Okay, with that, let's, may I have a vote to approve the meeting with Mrs. Bala attending remotely?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, 7-0. Thank you. On to 8.02, Approval of Revision to Policy GCBF, Regulation GCBFR, and Attachment 1 Early Retirement Incentive Program. Ms. Colbert?
Madam Chair, to the members of the board, good evening. As part of its budget development process, the school board approved offering an early retirement incentive program for eligible employees who retire with Spotsylvania County Public Schools and with the Virginia Retirement System effective July 1st, 2015. The Early Retirement Incentive Program provides a financial incentive to all retirees who elect to participate in the retirement program per the provisions of the approved policy and regulation. The approved policy states that employees electing to participate in the E-RIP must complete the application by March 16th of 2015. Due to the inclement weather, staff requests that the school board consider extending the deadline to complete the E-RIP application process to March 23rd, 2015. Additionally, staff request for the school board's consideration to waive the second reading of the proposed revision to Policy GCBF.
Okay, I'll make the motion on the floor, presented by Ms. Colbert.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Bala, second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving the changes in GCBF, GCBFR, and the attachment? Aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Colbert. Okay, on to 9.01, Informational Items. Are there any, anything? Mr. Braswell has an informational item for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to make mention of this in my comments. Mr. Chris Akabowski and myself are having a town hall meeting on the 25th of March at 7:00 PM at Cortland High School in the library. Again, that's the 25th of March at 7:00 PM at Cortland High School in the library. Thank you.
Anything else? Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Okay, on to 10.01, Unfinished Business. No, don't see any? Okay, on to 10.02. Anyone have any new business? All right. On to 11.01, Closed Meeting Items. On today, March 9th, 2015, it is resolved that the Board, Spotsylvania County School Board, conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Laura, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor going into closed session?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 7-0. We are going into closed session. We are going into closed session. From closed session to open session.
Got it. So moved.
Um, I think, did Ms. Gramp, did you get that? Ms. Gramp?
I'll second that.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Um, all those in favor of returning to open session?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seven zero. Certification of the closed meeting, whereas Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash three seven eleven of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, there now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Um, and do I have a motion?
So moved. Go ahead.
Okay, um, Ms. Br-, um, Mrs. Blaylock, and a second by Dr. Meyer, and then I'm gonna ask for a call, roll call vote, starting with Mr. Laura.
Laura, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye. Shelley, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Gramp, aye.
Seven zero, thank you. Um, and now the items from the closed meeting, um, Dr. Martin.
Motion is that school board accepts the recommendations of the superintendent for personnel resignation, personnel resignations, retirement, and the request for extended leave for two thousand fifteen, sixteen years presented in closed meeting and permitted by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia.
Do I have a motion, please?
I will, so moved.
Mr. Blaine, and a second?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Meyer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Seven zero.
Who for adjournment, Madam Chair?
Mr. Laura.
Second.
Mr., second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven zero.
Thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Seven fifty-three.
Twelve o'clock, noon. Yeah, yeah.